All right, we're back in session. The session continued on meetings last week. December 7th, Coral Harbor Day. So, calendar and correspondence. We've got the two on Thursday.
Yeah.
You want to give it?
Yeah.
I'll take that one, too.
Okay.
Always. And then the other? The Timber counties' DMR candidates at page?
That's at, uh, is it, that's Friday?
So they're to interview the two of you? That's my understanding, I was wondering if we could check that.
No, it's, uh, this is, yeah, this is kind of candidate days of anybody that has, um, applied for the position gets to make their pitch to whoever's going to call, so. I did it in person, but, uh...
Yeah, they can put this together rapidly. So my understanding is we could double check. I have that in my calendar. I'm not sure if they moved that around before. Because I was going through it with Marco's eyes. So that is each county has one vote or three votes?
Two. I believe the way it works, uh, I've asked, I've asked Laura Merrill, uh, Timber or Natural Resources Policy District Director to clarify this. I believe the way it works is that it's kind of like the vote for the County Association Board of Directors. Each council member or commissioner has a vote. And then those are tallying. It's not an action by each board commissioner or whatever.
Okay.
So I think that's the way it goes. I've asked her to clarify this.
We just want, yeah, we just wanted to...
Is that a guy from Kansas?
I'm not for sure.
Because I heard it was Craz Harbor County. I've heard Wes Cormier, Steve Rogers from Pacific County yourself. I think I heard something about someone kidnapped. I'm not sure about that. No, I haven't actually seen the applications yet. Uh... We've got the National Guard. Just kind of an even breed. We have the holiday breakfast, 6:45 on Thursday.
Volunteer, volunteers.
Yeah. I'll stay away from the food. I don't want to give anybody any time or anything like that. I believe also the, uh, the exit conference, which everybody thought was supposed to happen last week for the annual financial audit, it's going to happen today at 11 o'clock.
At that meeting, we did ask for one, they asked for one, with extensions.
Contendence or whatever.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's, uh, see here. It's 4:00.
To all the, uh, county board commissioners, to be able to you, regarding a case, if they want to do another act, there's a legitimate legal action in residence, but we're turning a longstanding right of the county board commissioners to entertain special counsel when needed to perform their business. That's an information letter. There's a course fund that's been on the building, providing, uh, discounters, providing the college, uh, the dentures, ground water, data. That's pretty extensive. And then there's correspondence, uh, Rita LeFord, Forest Supervisor of the National Forest, and James Bingsbury, Forest Supervisor of Alphabets, um, this is regarding, um, the national forest, the purchasers, and interested parties, providing the timber sale program, small business administration policy. And the last course funds, it was received, um, from Jefferson County, and you saw that email, I think.
Correct.
This is to the board from Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, providing our adopted interlocal agreement to create a new solish for the year old health organization.
Yeah, I think we had, let me discuss the interlocal. I think we had touched on this. I, we haven't seen the correspondence in Jefferson County. I think they were, they were just following up on the, on the power of elected counties for, uh, interlocals, to make sure that their thoughts are for each, each board commissioners, so.
I had a chance to network with Kathleen Clark. At the county's, uh, County Commissioners Association meeting, we got the sound of state, you know, the document as it stands right now, means what they were looking for.
Okay. Is it?
Thank you, Cindy.
Cindy. The legislature's speed, uh, whatever, goods. In fact, your recommendation from Health and Human Services to award proposal for mental health assistance to use in education services in the public schools to Port Angeles School District. So you're, good morning.
Good day. Good morning. Well, this is the first of many report goes to come through for 2016. This is actually a candidate RFP that we put out early in the summer and only had one response to, and we, of course, not sufficient response to the RFP. So we re-released it. We've had three different school districts at the bidders conference, but when it came time to submit the proposals, there was only one. And it is Port Angeles School District. And they are proposing mental health therapy visits for elementary age children. They have intervention specialists that they hired at the middle school and high school levels. So it's the elementary that, where the gap was. And what they're proposing to do is essentially, uh, it's a $70,000 proposal for 10 months, so it would be throughout 2016 minus the two months when the school isn't in session. So a 10-month contract, basically working with the private child mental health therapist in the community. So the school would take care of the screening, getting, getting the kids to the therapist, and, um, this would essentially cover that piece of it. It is a pilot program. It's an interesting new role for schools to be doing this. And it also, I think, will basically demonstrate whether we have a sufficient number of child mental health providers in the community to handle this.
So did the other schools decline because of any particular reason?
They didn't ask why they didn't follow through after they had attended the bidders conference. The West End is, Goody Valley is kind of what they've covered right now, at least on prevention and state funding. So the times, as well, that they weren't there. Squim and Crescent also attended, but they were the ones that didn't see their proposals.
And then just uses up all the money, so apply. If that's what you're trying to...
Yeah, well, and another thing is that we were looking to say that, uh, I think there's an issue of really looking at the part of the, uh, in 2016, assuming that they're just on the part of the, uh, where they didn't want to really issue that in 2016, and just wait for the next one. I don't, I really can't, I don't have a response.
Okay. So, you can say it.
Your first recommendation, uh, your former school district, their contract, contract coming back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm applying the faulty recognition of the task force.
Okay.
Thank you.
Men of two with prevention alerts extending contract through December 31, 2016, added a claim.
Well, there she is.
Ms. Lott. Is one of them?
Unique sweater, I heard, Christmas time.
My Christmas sweaters.
You did one.
My favorite. Um, what we have is another amendment to the prevention works contract. As you remember, when they gave their update last week, they said that this would become a third. So it extends it for another year, adds the rest of the money. So they would, excuse me, I'm right.
That's what I did.
Uh, adding the rest of the money so that it would completely use up the prevention that applies by the end of next year. Which is also at the end of the year.
And every person's comments? Forty days is supported by the prevention works order.
Yes, yes. We've been working with the treasurer and president, we've got an impact.
Okay, the commander. Administrator's analysis recommendation for indigent defense services.
As you know, our current contract for indigent defense services is, uh, only December 31st. And, uh, the board, the majority of the board, actually was unanimous at the, at the time during one of the budget meetings. The two of you that were here asked me to, to go out to bid for these services, the same way we did the last time. The last time we only got the one bid. And it is not required that we bid these kinds of services. So I did go out to bid, but I held off waiting for, to know whether or not the cities were going to sign a consolidated contract. You know, for criminal offense and misdemeanor, it would increase as our responsibility the entire cost of indigent defense, as opposed to, you know, our portion and the cities paying their portion. And unfortunately, that took a while longer than I was expecting. And so, last minute, last minute, we went out to bid. I did receive two bids, one from Crown Public Defender and one from Payne Law. I had asked for individual bids for each district court and for Superior Court. And then I said I would allow a bid for both courts, you know, combined bid, essentially the same as last time. I was hoping to be able to show, or that if anybody wanted to bid on both, there ought to be, together, there ought to be some efficiencies, you know, that, that if they, just as we found last time, Crown Public Defender, their district court bid plus their superior court bid was less money than their combined bid. So I was expecting to be able to show the same thing. What I got back was a bid for only district court from Payne Law and only combined, without breaking up, without breaking out separately for Crown Public Defender. And both of them, both of the bids were, um, I rejected both bids as a, as a bid thing and interbid negotiation phase with both, with both entities because it was more money than I had in the budget. And just to tell you how I did, I, I prepared the budget, again, last minute, last minute, all these things coming together. Our 2015 cost for indigent defense contract with Crown Public Defender was $865,240. The city of PA had a contract for $115,000, partly with Crown Public Defender and partly with Payne Law. And the city squam had a, a budget of $55,000 for a total of $1,035,240, combined total for everybody. And then on top of that, um, we have traditionally get, gotten a grant from the Office of Public Defense that's been going up based on the number of, total number of cases in Superior and District Court divided by popular, I guess, a little bit, anyways, about 65,000. So I had, um, expected if we carried on moving forward, and there was really no COLA, the June to June COLA was zero. So, so it would be no COLA if we were continuing the contract. So for 2016, I would have expected collectively between all of our bodies, $1,10240 in cost. So, however, I added, um, what did I add? I added, uh, in the, building the budget while this was all out going out to bid, I, I, I put in, in the budget, $1,140, which was $39,760 more than last year. So I, I basically put a $40,000 escalator into the budget, anticipating that that would give me room for when the bids came in. I was really hoping that the bids would come in low because of competition. And, and quite frankly, I'd heard from four different people indicating, taking information indicating they were thinking about bidding, but we only got two back. So I put in $1,140. Well, after renegotiating and the bids came back in, um, Crown Public Defender's combined bid of $1,090 was $50,000 more than the $40,000 raise I had given, okay? Or that I had put in for the combined total. So I didn't have the money in the budget and I didn't feel like I could, I could go that way. Um, it was $89,760 more than the combined totals of all the cities and the counties. And like I said, it was $50,000 more than what I had put in the 2016 budget. So I was worried about taking that one altogether. The Payne Law bid at $418,000 was less than what I had put in the budget just for, just for district court. I put $430 in the budget for district court and $640 in the budget for Superior Court, adding up, and then the $70,000 grant, adding up to the $1,040. That's what I was anticipating. So the Payne Law at $418,000 was less than I had budgeted. So I felt like, okay. My, and I, and I went over the, the weaknesses of each of my analyses and the, and the proposals. I mean, the way I saw it, and it was a really tough issue for me because I really felt like I had a good working relationship with Harry, for Harry Gaznick, the director of Crown Public Defender over these many years. And that, um, you know, it makes it easier on me to only have one entity to deal with. However, as I looked at it all, I believe the Payne Law bid was responsive. It, it hit all the key points that are required, both in our policy and in, um, the Office of Public Defense rules for indigent defense. It appeared to do everything we needed to do. It was less than, or within the budget that I had expected, a little bit less, and appeared to, to meet all of our needs. So my recommendation, but I had nothing from Superior Court, boom. And in talking with Crown Public Defender, I had asked them during the renegotiation phase, you know, would you please consider giving me a bid for each? He said he would talk to his board. I did get the response back, um, last week. His board said no, he wouldn't. I asked him if he would give me an extension. He said no, he wouldn't give me an extension, um, you know, to wait longer to try and put this, this whole package together. So, you know, back and forth. My recommendation is that we select the Payne Law group for the district court and ask the Crown Public Defender to re-propose for Superior Court and anybody else, just go out for bid, I guess, Superior Court and Juvenile Court. But I really believe that needs to be done in this short period of time that we have left. We, we really have to have, in my judgment, a unanimous decision among the board. If, if the board is not unanimous, I, and I put that in my recommendation, I believe we should, that this is the right thing to do because we're leaving ourselves exposed on the Superior Court side. I mean, on one person I talked to said, you know, gee, you can't do this because Crown Public, and not that I would ever expect Harry to do this, but Crown Public Defender could just put in their same bid and say, yeah, it's just for Superior Court, nobody else bid, and you're stuck. Then what do you do? So there's some exposure there. Um, I'm a little bit worried about it. Unless the board wants to move forward, I, I, I don't have the money in the budget. Um, I, it's too late in my judgment to change. I mean, we haven't officially approved the budget, but we need to do it by tomorrow. I don't think it's a good idea to change the budget. We don't know what it's going to be anyway. So budget's an estimate. If it turns out that the rebid of Superior Court combined with the, the district court is more than we have, we'll have to ask for a budget emergency next year. So for all those reasons, uh, it was a tough call, but, but like I say, I believe both bidders were very responsive. I believe Payne Law, although being brand new, and the weakness there is, is being brand new, you don't know what it's going to be. You don't know how the service is going to be provided. Uh, I've had nothing but respect and great service from Crown Public Defenders in all the time I've been here. They do a, a really good job. We've never been sued, that's a big thing. Other counties have been. At the same time, I didn't feel, from three years ago, when I asked the prosecutor's office, how do I make, can I put somebody on the decision-making panel to tell me to, to basically decide is one firm, when I was anticipating, uh, multiple bids and we didn't get any, but how can I decide if one firm is better than another from the advent of providing the service, the legal service? And I was essentially told I cannot. If the bar association and, uh, the, the state says that the attorney is legal and certified to practice law in our county, and they have the six months of work, of experience doing public defense, which both parties do, I can't decide. I can't say, no, one of them is better qualified than another. So I kind of look at my operational things. And operationally, I believe in my analysis that the Crown Public Defender contract is probably, is at least $50,000 more than I expected it would be. And that was after I gave them a $40,000 raise, when there was no COLA. And, um, it's probably $100,000 more, my best estimate, that if we accept the Payne Law and we get what I think is a reasonable, somewhere between $650,000 and $700,000 estimate just for Superior Court. So that's essentially what, what my thinking was. I understand there's all kinds of political, um, issues going on. There's, there's people that are very concerned one way or another. I've heard from a number of people. I've been told that you each have been contacted by people. So, um, again, my recommendation is as it is, just because it doesn't fit in my budget. But I really do believe it would be in our best interest to see if we could negotiate a, an extension for a month or two with Crown Public Defender and give us a better timeframe to come to a better decision sometime after the first of the year, get more information. So I'd answer any questions if you can.
So do we have a clause in our existing contract that will allow us to say we extend the terms of disagreement for 30 days?
No. We do have, it's a standardized contract that just with all of our regular contracts, if both parties agree to extend, we can extend, um, as long as the extension happens before it ends, right? Otherwise, we'd have to start over with a new contract.
And our contract expires December?
December 31st.
So how long do you think it will take to get, uh, submission of proposals for Superior Court and Juvenile?
You know, I would like to believe it could be done in a couple of weeks, but the reality is if there's another party that would want to get involved, uh, as opposed to, um, just Crown Public Defender putting something forward. Because like I said, they bid both contracts the last time. I know they know how to do it. But, and let me tell you, I have, I have no reason to believe that Crown Public Defender is, is going to do anything but a, but a tremendously good job for us, too, in the future, if we have. It just became in way too much money for what I could afford, what I reasonably believed should be afforded. You know, this whole idea of consolidation was supposed to improve efficiencies and save money. And I gave, I gave it $40,000 more dollars than what we were paying collectively, and it didn't, it didn't touch it. And so that was surprising and disappointing to me. So I don't want, I don't, a month would be the typical time that you would give to, to a complex bid like this if you were adhering to bid law. But it doesn't require bid law. We can negotiate. We don't have to go to bid. But the board told me they wanted to go to bid. So, been a lot simpler if I'd just negotiated a contract and avoided all this. I would have negotiated hard and, you know, I'd have done the best I could.
Well, I like the fact you opened the door for some competition. And then I did network in four, except, um, just four, as well as with the prosecuting attorney. And the only real issue that they shared was that with regard to district court, their hope was that they were able to continue. We've got a long period of time where the court has to pause, what is, just to slow down.
Right. We're on an apples-to-apples issue because we don't know what another, what a bid would be for Superior Court. So there's a question about the cost. We do know it'll take about $90,000 if we have to take Superior Court in house. Standardized cost up to $1.3 million. The years gone by, this Public Defender's Office has had a longstanding tradition of working with the county and our budget issues. And many times you have been able to work with them, deliver the budget number to the board tomorrow, though it's a budget of $1.4, $1.4 million, $140,000. I have no doubt that over the next month, you'll be able to work with Harry to reach an agreement that would live within our budget. So that's number two. So I think you're kind of cutting off that process a little quick. Three, uh, there's a 30-plus year history of a nonprofit organization providing what is a constitutional service to our citizens. There is no history of private attorneys providing constitutional service. That, that's really different. And then they have a board of directors. Dave Newper is the chair of their board of directors. The rest of their board of directors are all very reasonable, respected, highly sought-after, highly qualified. Uh, they've run the public office, some of them. They have served this community. And so they have a board of directors of which the public, I think, has some trust. By the law firms are for-profit. It's a nonprofit versus a for-profit. So I also know that as the laws have changed over the years, Public Defender's Office has been at the forefront of working with those law changes. They have tested county out of any litigation. They have kept the county, have not been besieged by members of the bar stating that we're not providing adequate public defense. We've not been sued by defenders who have said they have not been. So you open up a whole Pandora's box by making a change and to make a change this rapidly. Competition is good, except you can't, nonprofits are not a competition before profits. So you begin as apples-to-apples. And three, uh, I think it is important that we give Jim a month to work with Public Defender's Office to live within our budget. You could also talk to the other party and say, if he can do the whole thing for $1,040,000, there's no track record there. There's no history. This has never been an issue. Public defense, we have never had meetings that have been overrun with people upset about the public defense being issued in this county. So we have tried to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, and I, for one, am not interested in, I, I, what is the problem? Seriously, what is the problem? And if it's over $50,000, I have no doubt that he could work with the public, he could go to the board, he could work with it. They are nonprofit and they understand that we're a government, and we're nonprofit and we only have so much money, the board only authorized it. There are other ways he could do it, but what is the problem? What do we, what's, I know of a problem. I really don't. And I've never heard of a problem. And I've never been talked, stopped in the street and say, hey, you probably, it's been your office, you can't, you might have done a good job. So we, you will, you make a change. That, that, that is a little, a little scrutiny. And then finally, what we don't know, and I thought about this a lot over the weekend, probably way outside my education, but I do know this in my law enforcement days, that the reports and the citations that are issued in district court are vastly different than the reports that are taken up in Superior Court. And how do we know that district court always is going to be, that just that alone is a simpler process for public defense with Superior Court? Some of these, some of these are murder trials, some of these are life, you know, life and death trials. So to say, we're just going to carve out and I can do it cheaper based on an analysis, of which your analysis is just per-case analysis across the spectrum, really is deficient because you cannot, my limited experience, that testifies by... because you cannot, my limited experience, and that test of like Superior Court, many, many times in District Court, my professional experience with Superior Court, all of this. The level of complexity is not apples-to-apples. So, again, it could be that Superior Court would not come in with the six or seven hundred thousand based on you're just dividing the number of cases across the two courts. In fact, it could even come in. Like that math can't work because of the complexity of the cases. Some of these cases do go on for months and months, and so, the other thing is, all of those, wait, how often? I won't go there. Those are my thoughts. I would suggest that we give Jim a month to negotiate with Public Defender's Office to live within our budget, and if we can't negotiate to live within our budget, we'll figure out another sense of cost savings. Public defense is a right. As a law enforcement officer, hundreds of times in my career, I gave the right, someone's handcuffed. One thing you say is, you have the right to remain silent, you have the right to an attorney. If you cannot afford an attorney, one will be appointed to you. I hold that right here. I'm not willing to gamble on a new form of doing business. I actually fundamentally strongly believe in that right. I've issued those rights to people, I've had people exercise those rights, and it is confident, and the confidence in me in this county, when those rights are exercised, professional competent public defense is given to our citizens when they can't afford an attorney. And so, no disrespect to anybody else, but honestly, you have an organization, thirty-plus-year track record, always working with the county, always willing to help the county in tough times. They haven't been sued. What's the problem? What are we trying to solve here? And at the end of the day, your bid is an apples-to-apples, vastly insufficient with the number of cases across the board. My advice would be work with Harry all the time to come up with a contract that will pass tomorrow. Are you sure you're taking care of?
Can you tell me how it works? Sorry for cutting you off.
That's fine.
If the person comes into Superior Court and is assigned their defending attorney, is there a cap on the number of hours that person can access because we wrote a contract for a specific dollar amount?
No. What we currently have is, the contract we currently have with Crown Pub Defender, by the way, it doesn't, my analysis didn't, that's the only, the only small little item I would pick with what you said, I agree with almost everything else, is that the analysis was not done on a flat per case across the basis. It wasn't. The analysis was done on a flat per attorney, all-in cost per attorney across, and one required four point seven five, one required four point three six attorneys, and...
Then I might argue that, okay, I'll accept that, but then I would argue that you're still, your attorneys are practiced in Superior Court, they don't have to be vastly more experienced, so their costs, you're saying...
And I mentioned that.
Yeah, but you're saying your cost per attorney is the same for courts.
No, I'm mentioning that in the very first one, if you notice, I said the weakness of my analysis that way is that Superior Court attorneys need more experience and should be paid more. It's on the top of the page. And so, I said, you know, what is that? Is that fifty-seven thousand dollars for, you know, a little bit more than twelve thousand per attorney per year? Just a guess, based on, it's an informed guess, based on the salaries that I've seen that, quite frankly, Harry has given me for his various attorneys, the Superior Court attorneys versus the District Court attorneys, is where I came with that number. So, I mean, I did the best I could when I couldn't get the sample. But to go back to your question, when I couldn't get the separated bids from them, to go back to your question, the way it happens now is that the Supreme Court had issued rules and, oh gosh, I think, was it two thousand eleven or twelve? I can't remember exactly, but a few years ago, basically limiting the number of cases that an ingent public defense attorney or a public defense attorney can themselves carry.
For a year or something like that.
For a year, yeah. And that's a full-time attorney doing nothing else but injured defense, and it's a different level. They can do four hundred cases in Superior Court, and two hundred and fifty cases, I think it is, was it two fifty or one fifty? I'm confused now. One fifty. It's a hundred and fifty cases in Superior Court. So, that's a Supreme Court decision, full-time, right? And I understand there's all kinds of things going on, and so, we had to issue a policy change, which we did a year ago, or two years ago, basically saying we would adhere to that. And it's really, really interesting, the Office of Public Defense issued rulings that says, and then the legislature approved an RCW that says it's the county, or the cities in the case of municipal law, but the county that has to be, has to make sure that the attorneys don't go over their limits. And it allowed the judges to do it, and they kind of universally backed away and said, no, they don't wanna be involved in it. And so, we had to pass a policy change saying we would make sure. And so, that's one of the really good things that Harry has done for me the last several years, is given me that report, shown me exactly, you know, how many cases his attorneys covered, and so, we stayed very much in compliance. So, the contract we have now anticipates a fixed fee for an amount of cases in each court of various kinds in each area, and then it allows for a plus or minus ten percent. If the number of cases should be reduced by more than ten percent, or the number of cases should be increased by more than ten percent, we can reopen and negotiate a price, is what the current contract is.
So, the way it's organized is if someone abuses a defending attorney for Superior Court...
Yes.
Is assured they're gonna have access to legal counsel.
Yes.
If their case becomes more complicated, sixty to ten percent, the resources are available.
Yeah, we also have in the contract that, first of all, they don't do any extremely complicated, like murder trials and things like that. Those go to the Superior Court to ward themselves, and they have a net or pot of money, their own money, for conflict counsel, okay, that they handle. And they can also go outside that, like they did in that last retrial murder trial we had, outside of the three attorneys that they have on conflict counsel, and appoint an outside firm out of the county to make sure, and then they just send the bill down to us, make sure we have to pay them. And that's kind of the way it works. But getting back to your point on injured defense, we do also have, and Harry, to his credit, has never asked for this money, we also have the opportunity, if any particular case gets incredibly expensive, they have to hire, bring in way more investigators, way more witnesses, this kind of stuff, there is also the opportunity to come and negotiate for some extra fees, and Harry's never done that. He's always worked within the budget we had, and that's why I said, I was really looking forward to or continuing, I have no reason to want to lose Harry's firm because he's been very, very good, I believe. And I have no doubt they've had some very expensive cases, but on the other hand, probably have some that went on really quick, and you know, so within the total, we've been able to negotiate.
So, what I think is heard is, doesn't make any difference which firm is selected. On one issue only, they're the same, and that issue is providing legal defense to the person that has requested it because they don't have the money.
Right. Same number of attorneys, depending on how many cases we have, is the law, and they all have to do, they all have to have a minimum level of experience, they all have to have a minimum level of continuing education credits, they all have to have a minimum level of salary, because we have to say that they are comparable to what we're paying prosecutors that with the same level of experience. You know, we have to make sure that that's about the same. It's never exactly the same salary and benefits because we can't reproduce our benefits. Again, Harry's done a great job with that in showing me every year and putting it in the report that we give to Office of Public Defense every year, showing that we've met all of the qualifications and all the guidelines.
So, then, to me, I'm just thinking out loud here, decision criteria then goes to issues such as cost and risk management. If the same level of service is gonna be provided regardless of which firm we select because of the process that we follow...
Yes.
It's not a quality issue, because the same quality exists.
In what I'm allowed to interpret for quality, yes, because I can't evaluate individual attorneys and how good they are.
But the issues that...
But you're right. Risk management and cost are the two issues. And in a lot of ways, as risk management and cost always are, they're opposite one another. You know, typically, you know, you would think you'd get what you pay for, right? If you pay less, you take on more risk, that you might get sued in this particular category. You get a new firm, a new outfit, never done it before, never filled out the paperwork, never been in charge of this big an operation, the chances are that something that go wrong that we could be sued on is a little bit higher, there's no question. On the other, so the risk management side, if we accept the bid of a new firm, I believe our risk goes up. The cost goes down, however.
We don't know that.
Huh?
Can't say that.
I believe that's true on the Justice District Court side.
Which one might the risk be? But we don't, just how? In a straight face, there are all these people. Can you say you can guarantee our costs are gonna go down when you don't know the other half of the bid? You're straight, again, Jim.
You too. I cannot.
How can you say that? How? Can you definitively guarantee the deposit?
I cannot.
No, then don't say it. Then how do you say that?
Because, you know, when I'm budgeting, I don't definitively guarantee the public anything in a budget. I make my best estimate. And my best estimate is that District Court bid we got is lower than what it would have been.
That's not a good bid. That's not what the county services were asking for. That's like saying, that's like saying we're gonna build a road, and one contractor comes in, so they're gonna do the road and the trail next to the road, and another contractor says, I can do the trail. And the trail, when you break it out, is much lower than just the trail portion, saying, I think I'm gonna give it to the contractor that'll just build the road, the trail, we'll worry about the road part later, but I guarantee I'm gonna save money.
That's a good analysis.
You cannot guarantee...
I cannot guarantee. I agree with you there.
No, but it's about ninety thousand if we have to pay the house, if there's no reason to bid it, maybe just one up to a hundred and some odd thousand, almost three hundred thousand.
That's also about what analysis, I can't guarantee. I didn't say guarantee. I just said my best estimate.
For one portion, a very large contract...
Yes.
And a very large service.
Yes.
That's my point.
And I can tell you, to speak to your point, because I was asked this question directly by one of the many people who came in Friday to talk to me about why they didn't like what my recommendation was, because apparently got over it all over town, is that, yes, indeed, if Crown Pub Defender had come in with the original bid or the advised bid, it's something I could have afforded. I would've recommended that based on the, based on the risk analysis. I would recommend that bid, but when it's ninety thousand more dollars than the combined total of the cities and us, and I gave forty, fifty thousand more than I had in the budget, that was the difference for me.
You don't know.
But I do not know, you're right.
So, you're holding the knife.
It's just an estimate.
Right. How do you still...
Risk is higher. Risk is...
No decision can be made until you know, and if you don't get a bid for just Superior Court, then you have to put together a package for in-house.
Yes.
And so...
My best guess is that would be ninety thousand.
In theory, you don't contract for just District Court, you can get over it right now, you don't wait it up to know all the apples-to-apples and all the costs. You just cannot.
I cannot.
You cannot do that.
You're absolutely right. That is true.
So, you're thinking, Mike, that Jim gets to the negotiating table hopefully by the end of the year. And to tell you the truth, I'm a little laid back, if it takes him some more time, because the budget, you don't know exactly how many cases we're gonna handle.
No.
It's an estimate, okay? So, the odds are that it could get changed for a very legitimate reason.
Aborted.
In January, I mean, so it takes a little time, so the players will work with us. If I'm hearing you correctly, your position is we shouldn't take any, accept any offers till we know what the parties can do on Superior Court. I'm assuming Jim and General would as well.
Yeah, General's part of Superior Court, so they would have to be.
Is that your position, Mike?
And that's a reasonable position. I'm not disagreeing with that position.
I think it is a reasonable position.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, and that's kind of what I, that's what I'm saying here. If we didn't have a unanimous selection, one way or another, that would be my recommendation. It may be a couple of months.
You sound very, very confident, and would be willing to use their board of directors with over fifty thousand dollars, a three-year contract at thirty-plus generation, no doubt. As a nonprofit, Crown Public Defender's Office would live within our budget. I have no question, no doubt, and you wouldn't have to lose that chance. Lay out a budget, lay out that we're under the three-year contract, so that the next year's, there's no budget emergency, why the public defense, that's fine, we'll be straight there. My point is that I have, I have a lot of tremendous track record, this is a very good and track record, I've worked with the county, but I actually think that they would go a little bit higher than I expected.
And to be fair, I've now, this will be what, my fourth new contract since I came on, because we used to just do two-year contracts. And every time that I didn't go to bid, I was able to negotiate exactly as you are saying with their director, and we put together a package that we both felt was fair and legal and lived within the county budget every time. And had I been...
I was in the board's opinion.
Had I been able to do that this time without going to bid, I'm confident I would have done it. But in this case, the going to bid turned out to be way higher than I expected.
Have a bid for Superior Court, you can come here and make that statement. Still, gentlemen, you cannot, if any statement of the, have a bid for all the services that anyone requires.
I do, and that's what I was talking about.
Have a bid for a portion, you cannot compare the...
That's what I was saying, the bid I got, for all of them, was way higher than I expected.
Fifty thousand dollars on a million-dollar contract? I had about fifty...
It was, it's actually ninety thousand more than I expected. I really thought he'd come in under and he'd be a hero, but I'm just saying, I'd give extra forty just in case.
I think if we had gone to a more reservation, but again, it's a resumption. Would you reject those all, because they're not, because they don't fill all the services that you want?
They do, and that was why I rejected, in first place, both of them.
So, I'd be in favor of seeing what, you know, what Harry could do with the Superior and General Court, yeah, and hopefully in a short period of time. And kind of the issue, I guess, the, and Jim is the district, the awarding of the District Court contract, and I favor the idea of bringing some fresh blood into the process. Regardless of how effective Harry has been, competition is good, and I think there are enough sideboards that the system's gonna give us feedback if there's poor performance, I mean, our worst case, if someone comes to us with a lawsuit that wasn't represented properly. I don't see that exposure in District Court, the level of the cases that they handle, but I could be wrong, as opposed to a murder case in Superior Court. So, to that end, in the interest of competition, I'd recommend a conversation with Harry that is just on the Superior Court and the General Court to prevent the situation where the position that can be taken is to knock out competition on District Court. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a big practice. I think the door's been opened, the parties responded, the only issue that's on the table is the Superior Court. And, you know, I'm kind of with you, Mike, in terms of looking at the risk associated with fresh blood or a fresh firm on Superior Court. I think it is something that we need to be cautious about. So, that's my recommendation.
I see those as two different recommendations. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe his recommendation is essentially that we say, you know, something we only want to bid for all of them, and let's go back and negotiate. You could read between the lines, because he offered, is that if pain law would also come forward with a bid for Superior Court side, and then, and then, let's see if anybody comes forward, but until, what I heard him say, until and unless we have both sides taken care of, which is your preference, is done, I heard, is done by a nonprofit who we know has done a good job in over the years, and you'd like me to, or you'd like the board to say, you know, something, let's reject all the bids, let's start over, and direct the administrator to just negotiate a new contract with Crown Public Defenders that fits within our budget, is what I think I heard from him. And what I'm hearing from you is, let's hold the new blood in District Court and ask Harry to negotiate just the Superior Court side, and those are two different things.
I'd agree with that. Mike, if we have a different position.
Yep.
I've heard from the, a moment, a few observations. Jim, if you could break down the... Jim, if you could break down the, the, the final third option here is to bring the, bring the case assignment process in-house, as some other counties do.
Yes.
Mike mentioned the nine hundred thousand dollar cost for that. Could you provide a breakdown for that?
Sure, I can.
For that cost for us? I just want to be able to see that.
A more complete one, or how it comes up? I can tell you right now.
Totally would.
I can do that. I can do. It's essentially, just so you know, it's one attorney and one legal secretary, plus associated overhead costs for all of Superior Court, and Superior Court requires four point, four and a half, basically, four point six, four point six attorneys. So, one hundred thousand dollars salary and benefits for the attorney, similar to what we do with our, and then fifty thousand dollars salary and benefits for the legal secretary, plus some associated costs and expenses, and being over nine hundred thousand dollars.
Well, this is probably not germane, but I'm informed by, knowing my sister-in-law, who's an attorney in Alabama. The way it works, the way indigent defense works in Alabama is on pro bono basis. Excuse me, the judge or the county, I'm not sure exactly which, just decides whoever is, whoever is admitted to the bar is obliged by the, the way things work there to represent cases as they come up that don't have, that can't afford their own legal representation. So whoever's on the, who's next in line and sort of gets the case, and that's the way it works there. It's a, it's a kind of a self-organized system. Two other points. One is, more with my time as a court commissioner, the, the court has had a longstanding relationship for legal services with a private law firm in town. Way back when, you know, there was no, there was no reason to kind of question that relationship. But had I stayed on the court, I would have suggested, if I could have gotten at least one more vote from my fellow commissioner, I would have suggested that you put that contract for legal services out to bid, because nobody ought to, ought to believe that they have a contract, a contractual rate relationship perpetuated. Every once in a while, and this was like four decades, every once in a while, there needs to be an opening for other attorneys, other law firms, what have you, to have the opportunity, at least, to come in and make an offer. And so, that was at least part of the discussion, as I recall, a couple of years ago when the Supreme Court ruled first amendment effect, and we had case standards for Superior Court basically, that kind of thing. There was, there was some discussion, I remember at that time, about opening up this process for the opportunity for other law firms, simply because other law firms don't have the same scale as Clown Public Defenders. So they're unable to compete. They were, they were essentially barred from, from competing. And so, a couple of years passes by, and we have our discussion during the budget. That was the, the reason in my mind, why we, why we had that discussion, to say, let's, let's open up a bid. Coincident with consolidation between county and the two cities, see if we can, you know, get some scaled economies and maybe save some money there as well. That was, that was the thinking that I was making. The only qualitative difference, the essential difference between a for-profit law firm and a nonprofit law firm, is one pays taxes and the other doesn't, has nothing to say about the quality of representation, but the amount of legal achievement, the level of legal achievement, the diligence, the zeal, et cetera, and so forth, that, that is an issue. And yes, the, there's nothing to, to cause us to question the, the quality of service that Clown Public Defenders provides, that, you know, that they do a good job. But, again, and we're, we're in the midst, probably, of looking at this same issue with our labor attorneys, who have a longstanding relationship with Clown County. Nobody ought to believe that they have a permanent contract or a permanent relationship with government. That should be open to competition in some kind of way from time to time. The other thing which we haven't talked about is that the courts have a say in this. So, I'm interested in hearing you refer to the dispute, I don't know if I should characterize it exactly like that, but an impaired relationship, probably better way to say it, between District Court one and Clown Public Defenders. Should we award a successor contract to Clown Public Defenders? What's that going to do to the cost for indigent defense for District Court? Should that judge say, you're not going to practice in my court? And, you know, that's, that's Article Three. We have nothing to say about what a judge says about who gets to practice in front of, in front of the bar of justice there.
Well, for me, that was a weakness that I noted, because I have been made aware of it, but it was not one that I felt was my fight, or that I should really spend a lot of time dealing with.
I know, but if it, if it leads to some sort of cost driver, should we award the contract in particular way? That has to be acknowledged somehow. I don't know how to do that, but the, the essential point is that judges, our Superior Court judges and our District Court judges have a say in this. And so, consulting with them is, is legit, and to see how things would work, if it goes this way, or if it goes that way, depending on the decision of the other things. And, and the last thing, so I, I'm coming close to finishing my point here, but my point is, let's give this a week. Let's see, you bring back some detailed cost information for bringing, bringing it in-house, what costs are incurred, what costs are perhaps avoided. And I've, I've had some extensive discussions with our prosecuting attorney's office on the question of whether I can or cannot, according to our ethics ordinance, vote on this matter. And the conclusion that Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Brian Witten and I reached was that I could, as long as I fully disclose the, the relationship of longstanding with Will Payne I have. I have no control whatsoever over who bid, so it just so happens that one of them is a friend of mine, when he, when we, when we bring this back, and if we decide to bring it back, I'll, I'll be happy to lay out all the, and fully disclose all the individuals in my relationship with Will Payne, should that, should that be necessary. But I, I think we ought to, I think we ought to give ourselves a week to sleep on this, and bring it back a week from today, and let's see where we, see where we are at that point. Because the, the necessity of, the public policy necessity of ensuring that every attorney that's admitted to a bar has the opportunity to bid on providing legal services to indigent defense, is a, is a good, that's a good public policy. It's unfortunate that we, that we have these sort of apples that aren't these bids, which leads to the conundrum that we're discussing here, but let's, let's, let's see what happens in a week. Can I really, Jim? In terms of being able to get together with Harry, inside of a week?
Well, I can certainly try and hear that in his discussion. His discussion was just bring back to a week what it, the detail, what it really would cost us to do in-house, to bring in-house. And I can tell you that when we looked at going in-house, you didn't talk about this, but when we looked at going in-house a couple, three years ago, both District Court and Superior Court, we were talking then about in-house, in-house was way too much money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But an ombudsman situation where you have an in-house county employee.
Case coordinator.
Yeah, that coordinated with individuals to provide indigent public defense, as a couple of other counties have done, and it's not more expensive. But we didn't have support from all of the judges to do that. They liked what we had doing, particularly in Superior Court. Those three judges are gone now, though.
No, I want to revisit.
But that is a, that will take a long time to set up. I mean, I can't just do that in a couple of weeks or a month. But it is possible.
I see that as a potential third option.
Yep.
It's simply, it's simply somebody that says to Attorney X, got a, got a case, can you, can you accommodate it? Yes, no. Or you conflicted, yes, no. Answers, yes, okay, you got it. Answers, no, you go to the next one on the list, and so on, so on, so on.
There have been a few counties that have already been successful.
And then everybody, every attorney that's admitted to the bar in Clown County, perhaps even Jefferson County is why, since attorneys practice in, in both counties, at least to my knowledge, that I could give them a, a shot at that.
And, you know, to me, that would be a good argument if the board wanted to say, we'd like to look at that, to, to try and talk about getting a one-year extension of our current contract. Because it would take most of a year to put a situation, to put a, provoke a system like that together.
Well, if you wouldn't mind talking to the, to the judges, because we've got a bunch of new ones. They may have a different view. And just write some, put together a sort of a, as, as well as you can do it in a week's time.
Okay.
Notional third option here, just so that we, we, the board have, have got the full menu of things that we consider.
I can do that. Once again, I feel, it sounds like the two of you are willing to move forward with Mr. Payne's bid. I'd have to put this on the table, because he'll be looking to hire people. Any contract I work at at this late date, two weeks before Christmas, it certainly would be a visit if it were New Year, and it would be my intention, revisit that contract. Again, I go back to, this is not the time. Two weeks before Christmas, a week before Christmas, what heck, we scheduled meet on the twenty-third, was voted on the twenty-third. That is not fair to this community, made a thirty-plus year change, when it could have been discussed many, many times over the last three years. And if, if that's the business that's been at the end of the year, I think it would be imperative on the new board to revisit that as quick as possible, so I just caution you. It, it's setting up a terrain for failure right out of the gate. It's not the right way to do business. It's not what the public expects from this board two weeks before Christmas. They expect us to just pass a budget, pass the contracts, have to be passed, go on break, let a new board come in, new elected commissioner come in and begin to tackle somebody's way dear issues. This is not good business. It really shouldn't even have been an issue, should it just been direct, we should just direct him, negotiate an extension, and move on. I understand that for a couple of weeks you guys can do this, but I'm telling you, it's not, it's, the optics are not good, and it would damage what the goals that maybe you're trying to set out. That's all I'll say, but it would, it's a, it's, it's, this is, this would be a damn deal. Wouldn't you be?
Yeah, I just think we could negotiate a, like a three-day or sixty-day extension to the current agreement. What do you think the odds are on that?
I, I think the odds should be good. What I would prefer, given what I've heard now, the totality from the three of you, and what Commissioner Chapman just said, and he's right on, I mean, we don't know what Commissioner Lex Ozias would think, but potentially it could be different than what we're hearing from the three of you. And him being brand-new, you know, he would need to be brought up to speed, so I'm not sure it'd be really even fair to him to try and make this kind of a decision in just thirty days. So what I would prefer, given the totality of everything that I've heard, would be the board to direct me to reject all bids and negotiate a one-year extension with Clown Public Defender, which would entail more money to them, because they're going to be doing more work under our auspices, but to negotiate that within, within my budget, and then tackle this as a year-long project, or a six-month-long project, with the idea that we would have in place whatever we wanted to do by September, so that we could build a budget on it, and that we could, we could, you know, much more, much more thoroughly and with good deliberation, make a, a better decision, whether that's an ombudsman, whether that's a longer-term contract with the current company, whether that's, whatever it might be. To me, that would be fairer to the new commissioner. It would be more likely to achieve a, a good result for the, for, in my judgment, for the overall citizens, and we'd be trying to hurry anything along.
Well, let's, let's bring it back next week and have this discussion, you know, this is our first touch on this, and so I think it bears a little bit of additional deliberation consideration, though.
Okay.
Just to make it clear, Jim, so that next week the conversation, second one?
Well, I'd like to be the administrator to be, to, to. I'll, I'll attempt to do that. I'll bring back next week all the different options of who I can talk to and what anybody's opinions are.
And then next week, we're going to have a preliminary discussion on it. What does it mean if we try to do something like this internally?
Yeah, I'll have that, I'll have that data, because I can whip that out. I can whip that out in about an hour. So I did it before three years, I was just updating the new, the new, the thing is, I have to, if we do it in-house, then there's no more question about being close to what prosecutor's salaries and benefits are. It has to be exactly what prosecutor's salaries and benefits are, so that's a pretty easy one to put, put forth.
Okay. So, we'll reprise this next week.
Okay.
On the, where it is. Fourteenth, fourteenth. Parks, Fair and Facilities Change Order Number One with Interwest Construction for Clown County, what is the reference to this? What? Come on. Not often we say a cost reduction.
No, we're always tied down. This is a result of several discoveries that have occurred, which was our project out. We had some additions and some deviations, and fortunately, the net result ends in a credit to us, three thousand, thirty thousand. So, we would ask that you approve that.
My, my wish is. As they say, a no-brainer. Yeah, the three most periodic words in ship repair contracts, as we've said before, open and inspect. And it's, this is kind of the terrestrial equivalent of that, scrape the asphalt off, you never know which one.
There, there were lots of interesting things to discover.
Yeah. Okay, so it's going to be two weeks for tomorrow's questions.
The second item, I guess last week, the car charging station we discussed.
Let me, let me just retitle this, turn in the, your Joe, bear with me for a second. Mile County Courthouse LID Director for Project Update, per request of Board of Party, regarding charging stations.
The charging stations aren't part of this project that's currently going, they weren't part of the original grant request sent to the Department of the Poli. That said, we had discussed it, it came up last year, I forget exactly the name, but I did some research, you know, at the city, and then it was decided that we would go ahead and put in the underground utility conduits to make that happen. All that stuff's been done, completed. All we need to do then is just figure out what kind of charging stations we want to do, what, what kind we want to install and get that running. And some of my research recently, I found out that that's really not quite as easy as it sounds. There are lots of different types of systems that you could set up. There are also lots of incentives, apparently, the state of Washington provides for that, so I need to do some research on that as well. And also, it'll be a decision we need to make as to whether or not we charge for the use of these stations, or we allow people just to hook up. So there's a lot of details that need to be figured out before we go into the next session. So there's a lot of details that need to be figured out before we go into the next section. All that said, we did in 2016 budget, asked for a carryover of $100,000 for some items. And this being one of them to occur next year. So if there is funding already in place, well, if you approve the budget as it is submitted tomorrow, there would be money in there to do that next year. Yeah.
So what they're doing, the building, does it make any difference in terms of the infrastructure necessary? Do you need to make any changes to their contracts to provide infrastructure?
No, it'll be something totally different. Actually, it would be an informal process because I don't think the cost is going to be nearly, the cost shouldn't rise to the formal bid process. We should be able to take it a lot better now, or most of all.
Yeah, the, I'm not, I think you were here last week to hear the discussion with the, stepping back a little bit. You know, there's some thought about a network of charging stations, obviously because of the range of the electric vehicle. And there's different times to charge, you know, trickle versus a blast of voltage. And so to me, the question is, what's the most appropriate place for tourism purposes? You know, we want to encourage folks that, that may have an electric vehicle to come drive their vehicle out here. So where's the, where's the strategy as to where these things ought to be appropriately placed? Is the courthouse one of the places on that route or is it not? So therefore, would it be appropriate to look at an electric station or two or three in the courthouse just simply for court or for county employees? Or do we want to have that as a sort of waystation, stagecoach stop, as it were, back in the olden days, you know, on this tourist loop? And then, you know, let's all buy the same equipment so we can perhaps have a one maintenance contract instead of, you know, a dozen different kinds of technology and so on and so forth. So there's some, there's a discussion, there's some talk that needs to happen on a, you know, strategic plan kind of a basis for how we, county government and the courthouse fit into the, or don't into the, into the network.
We picked up that conversation, I'm cutting you off. Last Thursday at the RC and D meeting. And in fact, Mike Doherty joined us and the conversation was, if we look at something that's peninsula-wide, you know, what is the resource we need to coordinate? You got this gear over here and this gear over here, et cetera. Maintenance is a good example of why you might want to say, "Let's use the same equipment." But Kate Dean was asked by her board whether she could take the assignment. And it's only for a few weeks or maybe a little bit longer, but it's basically a coordinating exercise. As an example, Clom Transit is giving thought to a charging station right downtown. We're giving thought to one. There may be possibilities that would present. But there's already a model in place that the city has. And in fact, that one has the benefit, addresses the question of how charging. So they've gone through a process through the lodging tax advisory committee here in Port Angeles to set up a system, a protocol where basically lodging taxes are used. And, you know, I'm hearing numbers in the neighborhood, $3,000 a year, a small, large amount of money.
That's what I was going to say, I just verified over the weekend, the city doesn't charge the two charging stations downtown. So I was going to ask Joel to figure out how they're getting around the gift of public funds. And it sounds like the tourism folks have stepped up and said, "This is a benefit to tourism." As long as they use it to market the service, then that's no different than putting money in parks and then marketing. We got great parks or boat launchers. I mean, we put services out there all the time, but we don't necessarily charge them. So...
And I've gathered the information for the city, so you sound town.
So, and I'm questioning, that's the best way to go. I'm sure you could go back to their lodging tax advisory committee, I'm sure they would support the county with the program. Because there's just because there's two downtown, there's going to be two up here. People can walk downtown from here and they can walk into store buildings and they can do a lot of things. And, you know, park care, we can travel and, well, leave. And hopefully, yeah, maybe a couple of county employees will, will abandon themselves to that option too. Do you know how much they are?
They vary greatly. I mean, I was actually surprised, I looked it up last week, and they can be as much as a couple thousand dollars all the way to six or any.
Okay, so the $100,000 even in the budget is not just for that?
No, there are, there are, thanks for that.
So really, you're saying at the outside, we're talking $20,000? I mean, at the really outside, if we were to...
I think, I think right now it's high, the biggest, I think the biggest impact's going to be the wiring and given the distance that we have to run it to get to the station.
Sure, sure.
Well, that's where I was going.
The infrastructure, I mean, the conduit there.
So they need to wire it.
No, it's just the conduit.
Is it already closed down?
Yep. We've got an end, we had to run it to the Transformers on Fourth Street. So there'd be a bigger place there, hooked in, wired, we'll go. Show you roughly where the stations are going to go. These aren't, these aren't really... Sorry about this. They're going to go, this is the main entry to the courthouse here. They're going to go right there where that light dot is. There's a, there's a light pole and it's right at the accessible, it's at the end of the accessible parking places. There are two, you can put two spots there. In fact, they, they make these units, they make them, they make a lot of different kinds of outlets. You can't have them just with one outlet, two, three, four. And they have apps that people can, if we did choose to charge, they can, they can do all that through their telephones. And it approves and they pay for it and they go on. Yeah, there was a lot of eye-opening stuff, but the technology has really advanced in the past few years, so. And we've got people around and electricians and things over there down front field with the stations, so.
Sounds like we need to come back right after the first of the year when you're ready to do it. And give us all the options and, but with the idea in mind that we'll definitely plan on being in the game. Because it makes, from that small amount of money, it makes all the sense in the world. And with the lodging tax ability to add to their marketing that, hey, we've got, we've got stations.
Yeah, but there's also a national website, there's all the stations located throughout the country. So if you're making, if you're taking a trip somewhere, you can go in and see what's close to where you're going to be. And I think there's, they should have one or make two. In Port Angeles right now, I think there are a couple that squim. And then one or two to the east.
For those who criticize subsidizing employee travel, we only do the bus pass program. We are encouraged, employees, you ride the bus.
We do.
Provide access to a bus pass for, I'm sure, through a program for transit and such. So there's that. Someone's using it five days a week, maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's... First of all, I don't know how many of our employees can afford an electric car right now. But if they become more affordable, hopefully, that'd be an issue. But we already subsidize employee transportation to encourage lower emissions.
So if, if it's okay with the board, how do you feel about coordinating with Kate Dean?
That is a perfect point.
Because I think what's going on is Mike Doherty's aware of an organization that has funds. He needs a 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
RC and D is a 501(c)(3) and it needs funding. I don't, I'm indifferent about who does the coordination, but coordination at the outset, before we started spending dollars on this stuff is very essential, I think.
Can we get some more information together?
Yeah, RC and D is a perfect place to do that.
I want to get you in contact with them.
Great.
All right, so you could work with the local advisory committee, you'll see if there's somebody. When they're out there, there's money there, so if they're helping, they're okay.
So we're scheduled to come together in February just to look at our form and application process and then March for another distribution of funds in March.
And then is there any grant that you could buy back from what you just...
Like I said, there are actually a lot of incentives just in the state of Washington. I haven't had that opportunity in a while. I mean, it's two pages worth.
Chris, if Mike Doherty has anything he wants to add.
So Mike, when we had a chance to talk about this topic at the RC and D meeting, and basically the board asked Kate to investigate taking this on as an RC and D project. Was there anything else that you, you wanted to share with us about the project you are working on and the benefit of coordinating?
Well, I don't, it didn't, I don't know if Joel knows, but we, there is a $135,000 grant. So the RC and D could take a little bit of this, the grant. And then there's hopefully going to be some kind of a survey through local governments to drive towards facilities to see what their plans are and how sort of their market is going to put something in, like Crescent, Claylock, Quinell. It'll show a build toward this network. And then McCaw has six operating, Jamestown plans to put in their own. The grant might do the first step from Hood Canal. Port, Port Townsend has offered a site and maybe one more in the Port Angeles area somewhere. But part of the, you know, this little group of local 2020 people in Port Townsend and myself, we want to do this survey to see if we could bulk purchase. And as you said, standardize the equipment somewhat. So maybe that M and O would be cheaper if it's clearly standardized. So I think not rushing into it is a good plan. And maybe the OPTC, the Columbia Peninsula Tourism Commission, can help do the survey. I'm going to ask them to do it. And then Power Trip will probably give some ideas because I think they arranged five of them in businesses in downtown Port Townsend. So people are already working on it. Tesla Club worked with Port Angeles, the fund, the one on the waterfront. So somebody has to kind of research what's going on and then what's going to go on next and see if there's a way to bring the price down for everybody.
Obviously, the website I looked at wasn't up to date if McCaw has five near that many Port Townsend.
You'll bring some more information back to us for the new year and a recommendation on how we can move forward? There will be coordination.
All right, request for qualification for architecture engineering consultant services for Parks and Facilities Department.
This is our annual appropriate request for professional services funded up in 2016, a year to help with our capital projects. We have quite a few currently owned, and you stated architecture engineering, and also there's environmental specialty department as well.
We can, I know this is not your, questions, comments? Other sports, resolution status in government equipment and rental schedule for 2016. Want to come, you're more than Ross. Get away.
Okay, well, we're looking at this year, clearly nine adjustments, department-wise. Some up a little bit, some down a little bit, primarily by increasing, decreasing usage. And if you add a new vehicle to a fleet, say, for example, Assessor, they have a new vehicle that replaces a vehicle that's been depreciated out for a couple of years. That reduction in depreciation will obviously drop the rate for a couple of years. And then it's not over the act, or at least any kind of your debt issue, or its revenue. Bottom line is, current expense, both for 2016, maximum to 3.16% increase.
Yes, so what, what's this in saying?
The road department, basically non-current expense funds, the road department actually saved flat. And amazingly enough, through all their presence, some waddled up the river, some waddled down the hill, obviously, to the flat. And the column-based sewer have almost a 34% increase of this one vehicle. And it's getting near the end of its useful life and we're going to make some, some slight expense, or repairs to it. And the plans are on replacement, quite an increase in usage on that one too. So we're just picking that up, that one to make sure we replace here in a couple of years. This is a, it's an annual thing, pretty consistent, pretty standard. You have any questions?
And Mike, to better answer your question, when we had the public works question, we did before, or the board members, we had time before we got to Tom to do a full exploration. So I asked, normally we'd just be bringing back the resolution. All this information was made available with that budget time, but we didn't have time to go over it in detail and ask Tom any questions. So I had asked Ross to make sure that Tom came forward to this. So this is new information, it is the same as we put into the budget, but we're just giving more time for you to answer, ask any questions.
So all the questions, do you all realize, or do you all, or you all understand how, basically how I arrived at these, how these rate adjustments? I have information on every single piece of the equipment, every unit, every revenue. And they're, they're broken into categories where groups of similar equipment are placed. And every year, RCWs require us to review an adjustment, appropriate adjustments to the rates to keep them as close to zero profit as possible. And what I do is I do an evaluation of each category, very simply, its expense against the revenue. And if anything's extremely out of line, I'll go ahead and scan through, see if it's an individual piece of equipment that causes a bit of havoc. And if it is, sometimes I'll just let that category go for a year. And oftentimes, it covers itself rather than make, make, you know, knee-jerking to a one-time expense or something like that. Anyway, I do that to each of the categories that you see on your rate sheets and along and up and down.
That's what I'm... You can track, you can show your map. A lot of confidence.
Trust the looking.
That's our nature here. All right, so that's 3B for tomorrow, this is your questions and comments.
Just a real quick comment, you mentioned column-based sewer.
I think this is actually...
Oh, I'm sorry, 7A, you have the wrong number here.
Seven. The column-based sewer, what I wanted to share with the commissioners is that the budget provides for an increase in the rates for the column-based sewer. And I had, I met with the advisory committee. They still want to go through a formal process where they reach out to the public. And, and so what I'm saying is that what's in the budget right now is a projection. There was general agreement, there is some conversation about whether there should be a difference between the residential and the businesses. And that, to me, is a conversation that occurs locally, especially if they can stay focused on the dollar amount. So just a heads up to you that technically, although that number sits in the budget, I still need to hand-watch the process. We're just, but definitely...
It's been the tradition that we have worked closely with the community, the community groups, and have really, you know, the ability to come back and say, "The community is not supportive and can't do this." But I can't imagine that that being, with your support and the community's support. And that's exactly the role we need to play in coordinating with that community. It always comes down to how much can they afford versus how much do we have the tactability to keep the system running? But at the end of the day, it's public, you know, public health, so we have to make sure it's stayed running. And we've been really careful with the increases. Obviously, the public would love to have it be self-sufficient, that's just not feasible. And we, a couple of years ago, I don't know, probably five, six years ago, had to backfill to the fund, you know, our general fund reserves. And if we have to do that again, you know, that's option two, permanent flow of life.
That's right, and we did for three years in a row, we, we did set that. One-third of the, of the projected shortfall was achieved.
We've looked at that, so have, you know, I've offered that, I've covered the record, I have that documentation, so you have that history. And we're going to make the community, economic, the community, they just can't afford to run that service all by themselves. And there's just not a problem. In fact, we've lost, we've lost rate payers probably in that day. In fact, we've lost, we've lost rate payers probably in that day. Please work on how to bring it back and bring back what you think they can afford and, you know, what we need to then sort out.
Oh, that is a way. Great work. And Bill, if you need more specifics as you, as you play your role in that, let me know and I'll give you the rate comparison sheet, which is basically the refined sheet that shows you all the expenses by Clonan tire parts, shock labor, inside labor, outside labor, fuel, with the accident, anything like that, appreciation. And then revenue line, I will provide in that sheet.
Should we give the budget up and show the actual, and then finally you need to have a particular lead on securing the necessary funding to begin the, whatever, placeless insurance. It's before completely.
That's good. Before completely.
More than time.
That'd be a great project. I personally believe, well, we seek you with sewer as to an undiscovered found jewel in America. You show me another place in America that has that much unencumbered coastline and has billable lots that could be a public sewer. I just, I just can't, and why haven't it discovered is beyond me need to a degree, but that is, that is a, and so, I mean, to me, it's economic development issue as well of a public sewer. As long as, that's also with not having all the deferred environmental purposes. So all that sewage, it doesn't go in, you reach into the stream, it allows all those lots to be billable. There are some people that are. So it's comfortable when you take, start taking a lead on the replacement process.
I very much appreciate your collaboration because the committee was concerned the budget would be published, citizens would read, there's a rate change, and there had been no conversation with the community. And so I committed to, we would present this as an alternative, discuss it with the public and share with the commissioners what those conversations generate.
And this is just one more example, and I feel like, given the events that have been happening the last couple of months, it doesn't prove to be the only reason. Town budgets, just like government budgets, just like your own personal budget, are estimates. And they're living documents. You know, we have to follow a little more rules and be a little more open, and the commissioners have to do it in an open session anytime we make a change, but they are just estimates. They're our best estimate, given the information we have at the time we move forward. And new information comes in all the time.
Well, one last thing for you, you may have intended some of those meetings over the years, but before, you said everybody agrees with traditionally how the commissioner committee out there, using either the Clonan Bay that you sent her when you were with the cafeteria at the school, of which rates were then to public comment from your media associate or want to schedule that. That, that always worked well and the staff came out and laid out. And you put it on board and people become more reasonable and understand. Yeah, get those documents where we've done budget terribly over the years, now give us a breaking streak, the tradition of working with that community.
Good. Appreciate your advice.
Seven A for tomorrow. Release for Doug. This was never meeting in January. Never got any of the meetings coming, he's been snowing this stuff.
This particular document, a little bit, I'm crossing my head of why we're.
I can tell you, I can tell you. You've already had this in front of you, you've already reviewed it. This is just the, the requirement of, to come back to you for the actual release that you asked for. When, when Joe was ready, I mean, you guys approved it already, this is the document determined to be necessary, it has to be voted on, approved by the entire commission because it is a, one of the bundle of rights of, of land. And therefore, it has to be formally done by the board. So that's all this is. It's just following through with the proper paper on the agreement that you, or the question you already answered a couple of weeks ago.
So functional.
It is.
E that ceases.
Yes.
Probably seven B for tomorrow, and we'll see all the other discussion. Good to the order. Last thing in about the request, thanks very much, Ron.
It came to us from the, from the charter review board. And, you know, I understand we'll probably take a look at the issues beginning in January, but if I look at the issues and try to pick out which one is toughest, it was the last issue on that, and it's the title of it. And I've been thinking about a simpler way to tackle this, and I just wanted to bounce it off the board. Right now, we have a provision that's in our charter that says that elected officials are exempt from personnel policy. And my proposal is that we, we visit, why did that get there? Is it necessary today? I'm just going to go there and consider the status. And if that exclusion was reversed, would that actually satisfy what the charter review was looking for in terms of a different mechanism that could deal with reporting issues, personnel issues, as opposed to setting up a bunch of, I think, well, systems, bureaucracy? It's nothing that I'm firmly committed to. I just thought about that as my, to, to run the rest of them. I saw it as kind of mechanical, that one. I saw it as could get pretty involved. And then I stood back from it and asked the question, if I was asked as an elected, would I agree to follow the personnel policies that all employees follow? Why wouldn't I say that's fine? You know, the only issue I see is that I do a lot of travel, you know, since I'm not here at the office all of the time, let McAllister go, ten member of the public, you don't know where I am. So besides that, I just, I can't think of a good reason. I just wondered too, if they had a sense of history on that, whether this has been explored before.
I assume we were required to follow the policies, although some are exempt by, say, laws such as, you know, technically, you only have to meet once every forty-five days or once a quarter, I think, to afford to fulfill your duties. And traditionally, they're not, you know, the employees obviously are tied up, they're supposed to, particularly vacation, other benefits of elected officials don't have or travel. Purposes at the end of the day, an elected official is elected twenty-four seven, so you really never have, you know, you never, maybe from vacation, you're sort of a whole other position. But I think, I thought that just in general, I mean, I think that you could put something together that says, you know, unless you identify a law, all elected officials don't follow that. So you, you know, you have policies that you, so I assume the most important part of the company, you know, that's.
Yeah. Go to the quality areas if you have any questions.
You know, in my estimation, in my estimation to answer your, that's exactly the point of contention that got us into the, into the difficulty with the issues, the investigation going on with the previous D C D director, is that, is that we were reminded that the elected officials are specifically exempt, Article ten, section ten point two of the Clonan Bay Charter, of personnel policies. And it was personnel policies where we put all of the, all of the investigative steps that we take. There was the issue. It wasn't that people shouldn't treat their people right and do the right things, it was that's where we have all our investigative steps. And therefore, we could not use our own investigative tools, was the determination that Riskpool made for us, because all of our investigative steps and processes were in personnel policy. So that's why we had to end up going outside and we ended up turning it over to the state attorney general and they sent us the big, big, big bill. And so I agree with you, you know, that was the, so the problem that the charter review committee was trying to fix. How come there's no accountability on these things? There's tremendous accountability in all of our appointments and all our, and we have a really good, solid investigative process and discipline, progressive discipline, we have all of that. But because it's all in the personnel policy and, according to our charter, electeds and their one, first deputy or whatever, are specifically exempt from the entire personnel system, we couldn't go down that path.
Look at the, and the ball has to bounce on a couple of cushions before the, before heads into the pocket here. Look at the ordinance that adopts policy by ordinance and therefore then requires every elected or appointed or employee alike to follow the ordinance, or follow the policy because it has to be effective on ordinance. There may be some clarification that we could do on that exact point that gets us out of this pickle that we were in before because we were, we were in a gray zone or had a, kind of an unaddressed area of how do we address this particular situation. But that has to be squared also with the fact that essentially elected officials, appointed employment contract is with the people. You know, that's, that's a, that's a whole different thing than a appointed department head that's under a contract or a represented employee or a non-represented or your charter is that, whatever. A lot of different, different groups of parts there as well. So, yeah, but that would be very worth investing some time in thinking about how to fill in that uncolored block as it were, this whole stage that we got here. So that may be the right track. The other, the other piece of it is, you know, we are all elected independently of each other and, you know, we, we commissioners are unique and we can only do stuff as a body, as opposed to, you know, carrying out this particular function that's assigned to us individually by law. And that's a whole, that's a, that's a different beast, that is, an elected department head has a function responsible with merely executive power, executive branch power instead of legislative power in addition. So it's a, it's a rich mix of how do you square the circle? And I think that would be worth, worth some thinking next year.
I was going to suggest when we talked about the next steps for the recommendations, speaking of housing, suggest that we actually set up again, maybe one or more work sessions. But if I'm able to charter a review meeting who served and maybe who supported those recommendations to come sit with the board, because I can't get their mind if they're going into, running into the recommendation, you've broken down, maybe flesh it out and maybe, maybe in some of those discussions, some of the things you raised, we might find, you know, areas of agreement that the board can say, you know, and bring that back into the conversation, those that you want to participate.
And I was also thinking the other electeds.
And then the electeds who the.
I don't know if that's a topic, you can have this conversation, you know, like once a month when you get folks. I'm kind of a little casual in working on it. And one of the things people bring to my attention is, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And why?
And that, that butts up to the, I think it's part of criminal statutes that prevents us from intruding on the office of another. So what, what exactly does that mean? Where's the, where do we draw on that? And so I think if we clarify our, through ordinance, I think we clarify that. I think that's the appropriate vehicle because we're all sworn to follow our ordinances. That's ultimately where, where it should wind up, like ordinance that defines the relationship as well as it can.
So during charter amendment, what is ratified, I actually have no doubt that the charter amendment, county officials need to follow county policies and get eighty-nine percent.
I mean, that's, that's another no-brainer, as they say.
Exactly. So that's a no-brainer. So I think, but again, we work with the charter review, so we can, we may flesh out that with their needs, but, because I'm with you, the one is a whole new level kind of office of your, you know, starting with your own, but they also want to redress, the public redress. So we can talk about that. And where is, where is the problem place? If you have a complaint that's an elected official, is the administrator in the right place? Probably not. Is the prosecutor in the right place? Probably more appropriate of the sheriff. Another elected official, as opposed to people who especially with imminent uncertainty in an investigation, an elected official, which is not, the optics there are not good at all.
Well, the charter contains right now specific language that says the administrator and his function as per the charter, your job description per the charter doesn't have a whole other relationship of people to their elected officials. So I think they're looking for a place to go.
See if we can't bring the charter review, what's happening to that, and elected officials.
Because I listened to some of the comments that Mark had provided, he was with that group, and there was conversation. And at one level, when you're dealing with a full blown need for an investigation, say there's an investment, there's a system already. And so that is, and so, and I was kind of hearing Mark say, be prepared to use that existing system. And if you choose not to realize that you have to hire very dedicated professionals trained specifically in that investigation process, but I was thinking about something that's less than a crime for us, something that does, where you can say, the commissioners said six months ago, this would happen, we did it. Or is this being filibustered, stonewalled? And I agree with you, I'm not sure exactly who, but I think the public should have the right to say, I'm the call person because I want to know.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
We have the eleven o'clock meeting.
Yep. With the other, excuse me. So no further business coming before the board commissioners will adjourn this week's meeting. It'll be tomorrow morning for our weekly meeting at ten a.m.
As you know, our current contract for indigent defense services is on December thirty-third. And the board, the majority of the board actually was unanimous at the, at the time during one of the budget meetings, the two of you that were here, asked me to, to go out to bid for these services the same way we did the last time. The last time we only got the one bid. And it is not required that we bid these kinds of services. So I did go out to bid, but I held off waiting for, to know whether or not the cities were going to sign the consolidated contract, you know, for criminal defense and misdemeanor increase as our responsibility, the entire cost of indigent defense, as opposed to, you know, our portion and the cities paying their portion. And unfortunately, that took a while longer than I was expecting. And so, last minute, last minute, we went out to bid. I did receive two bids, one from Crown Public Defender and one from Payne Law. I had asked for individual bids for each district court and for superior court, and then I said I would allow a bid for both courts, you know, combined bid, essentially the same as last time. I was hoping to be able to show, or that if anybody wanted to bid on both, there ought to be together, there ought to be some efficiencies, you know, that if they, just as we found last time in Crown Public Defender, their district court bid plus their superior court bid was less money than their combined bid. So I was expecting to be able to show the same thing. What I got back was a bid for only district court from Payne Law and only combined, without breaking up, without breaking out separately for Crown Public Defender. And both of them, both of the bids were, I rejected both bids as a, as a bid thing, an interim negotiation case with both, with both entities because it was more money than I had in the budget. And just to tell you how I did, I, I prepared the budget, again, last minute, last minute, all these things coming together. Our two thousand fifteen cost for indigent defense contract with Crown Public Defender was eight hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. The city of P A had a contract for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, partly. Um, the city of PA had a contract for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, partly with Crown Public Defender and partly with Paying Law. And the city squim had a, a budget of fifty-five thousand for a total of a million thirty-five two forty, combined total for everybody. And then on top of that, um, we have traditionally get gotten a, a grant from the Office of Public Defense that's been going up based on the number of, total number of cases in Superior and District Court, divided by popularity, I was a little bit wrong, anyways, about sixty-five thousand. So I had, um, expected, if we carried on moving forward, uh, and there was really no COLA, the June to June COLA was zero. So, so it would be no COLA if we were continuing the contract. So for two thousand sixteen, I would have expected collectively between all of our bodies, one million, one hundred thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in costs. So, however, I.
All right, we're back in session. Uh, the session continued on meeting from last week, December seventh, Coral Harbor Day. So, calendar of correspondence. So we've got the two on the first day.
Yeah.
I'll take that one too.
Okay, okay.
Always. And then a lot. The Timber County is DMR candidate's at eight.
That's at, uh, that's right.
So there are two.
That's my understanding, but I was wondering if we could check that, cause.
Well, it's, uh, this is, yeah, this is kind of candidate days, so anybody that has, um, applied for the position, gets to make their pitch, whoever's on the call, so. I did it in person, but.
Yeah, they can put this together rapidly. So my understanding is, if we could double check, I have that in my calendar at ten o'clock. I'm not sure if they moved that around or what. Cause I just, going to be with Mark O'Seas. So that gives each county has one vote or three votes?
I believe the way it works, and I've asked, I've asked Laura Merrill, uh, Timber or Natural Resources Policy District Director, clarify this. I believe the way it works is that, it's kind of like the vote for the county association board of directors, each council member or commissioner has a vote. And then those are tallying, it's not a action by each, uh, board commissioner or whatever.
That's a bad time.
So I think that's the way it goes. I've asked her to clarify this.
We just, yeah, we just responded.
I don't know for sure. Cause I heard it was, uh, Crays Harbor County. I've heard Wes Quamier, Steve Rogers from Pacific County yourself. I think I heard something about someone kidded out, but I'm not sure.
No, I haven't, I haven't actually seen the applications yet.
We've got the National Board. Just kind of an even breed. We have the holiday breakfast, six forty-five on Thursday.
Volunteer, volunteers.
Yeah. I'll stay away from the food, I don't want to give anybody any talent or anything like that. I believe also the, uh, the exit conference, which everybody thought was supposed to happen last week for the, uh, annual financial audit, it's gonna happen today at what, o'clock?
Yeah, that maybe they did ask for one, they asked for one week extension, so.
Yeah.
And, right, is, oh, I can see here. For us. The county board commissioners, to, to you, regarding, um, regarding a case, if they want it in that half, there's, uh, there's a new legal action that threatens, uh, overturning a longstanding right of the county board commissioners to entertain special counsel when needed to perform their business activities. That's an information matter. There's a court of five, it's not a meeting room, providing, uh, discounters, providing ecology, uh, the Dutchman's groundwater, that is, that's pretty expensive. And then there's correspondence, um, Rita LeHord, forest supervisor of the big national forest, Jamie Tinsbury, forest supervisor, now favors, um, this is regarding, um, the national forest, timber purchasers and interested parties, providing the timber sale program, small business administration policy. And the last correspondence, it was received, um, Jefferson County, and you saw that email I gave. This is to the board from Jefferson County Board Commissioners, regarding our adopted interlocal agreement to create a new solidish, premierial health organization.
Yeah, I think we had, we discussed the interlocal, I think we had touched on this. I, we hadn't seen the correspondence in Jefferson County. I think they were, they were just following up on the, on the power of elected counties for, uh, interlocals, to make sure that their thoughts are for each, each board commissioners.
I had a chance to network with Kathleen Clark, county counties, uh, County Commissioners Association, maybe in that sense that, you know, the document as it stands right now meets what they were looking for.
Okay. Is it?
Thank you, Sandy.
Sandy. Your recommendation from Health and Human Services to award proposal for mental health assistance to youth and education services in public schools to Port Angeles School District. Do you, good morning.
Good morning. Well, this is the first of many report goes to come through for two thousand sixteen. This is actually, um, the RFP that we put out early in the summer and only had one response to, and we, of course, not sufficiently responsive to the RFP. So we re-released it, we've had, uh, three different school districts at the bidders conference, but when they tried to submit the proposals, there was only one. And it is Port Angeles School District, and they are proposing mental health therapy visits, um, for elementary aged children.
Added, um, what did I add? I added, uh, in the, building the budget while this was all out going out to bid, I, I, I put in, in the budget a million, one hundred and forty, which was thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars more than last year. So I, I basically put a forty thousand dollar escalator into the budget, anticipating that that would give me room, uh, for when the bids came in. I was really hoping that the bids would come in low because of competition. And, and quite frankly, I'd heard from four different people indicating, taking information, indicating they were thinking about bidding, but we only got two back. So I put in a million, one forty. Well, after renegotiating and the bids came back in, um, Crown Public Defender's combined bid of a million, one ninety was fifty thousand more than the forty thousand raise I had given, okay? Or that I had put in for the combined total. So I didn't have the money in the budget, I didn't feel like I could, I could go that way. Um, it was eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars more than the combined totals of all the cities and the counties. And like I said, it was fifty thousand more than what I put in the two thousand sixteen budget. Um, so, I was worried about taking that one altogether. Um, the Paying Law bid at four hundred and eighteen thousand was less than what I had put in the budget just for, just for district court. I put, uh, four thirty in the budget for district court and six forty in the budget for Superior Court, adding up, and then the seventy thousand grant, adding up to the million, one forty. That's what I was anticipating. So the Paying Law at four hundred and eighteen thousand was less than I had budgeted. So I felt like, okay, um, my, and I, and I went over the, the weaknesses of each of my analyses and the, and the proposals. I mean, the way I saw it, and it was a really tough issue for me, because, um, I really felt like I had a good working relationship with Harry for, Eric Gasmick, the director of Crown Public Defender over these many years. Uh, and that, um, you know, it makes it easier on me to only have one entity to deal with. However, uh, as I looked at it all, I believe the Paying Law, uh, bid was responsive, it, it hit all the key points that are required, both in our policy and in, um, the Office of Public Defense rules, uh, for indigent defense. It appeared to do everything we needed to do, it was less than, or within the budget that I had expected, a little bit less, um, and it appeared to, to meet all of our needs. So my recommendation, but I had nothing from Superior Court, oh. And in talking with Crown Public Defense, I had asked them during the renegotiation phase, you know, would you please consider giving me a bid for each? He said he would talk to his board. I did get the response back, um, last week, his board said, no, he wouldn't. I asked him if he would give me an extension, he said, no, he wouldn't give me an extension, um, you know, to wait longer to try and put this, this whole package together. So, you know, back and forth, um, my recommendation is that we select the Paying Law group for the, uh, district court and ask the Crown Public Defender to re-propose for Superior Court and anybody else, just go out for bid, I guess, Superior Court and Juvenile Court. But I really believe that needs.
Um, they have intervention, intervention specialists that they hired at the middle school and high school levels. So it's the elementary that, where the gap was. And what they're proposing to do is essentially, uh, it's a seventy thousand dollar proposal for ten months, so it would be throughout two thousand sixteen, minus the two months when the school isn't in session. So a ten month contract, um, basically working with the private child mental health therapist in the community. So the school would take care of the, uh, the screening, getting, getting the kids to the therapist and, um, this would essentially cover that piece of it. It is a pilot program, uh, it's an interesting new role for the schools to be doing this. And it also, I think, will basically demonstrate whether we have a sufficient number of child mental health providers in the community to handle this.
So did the other scrolls decline because of any particular reasons?
They didn't ask why they didn't follow through, uh, after they had attended the bidders conference. Um, the West End is Goodyear Valley, it's kind of what they've covered right now, we passed, at least on prevention, at the state funding. Um, so it was kind of a surprise, I always thought they weren't there. Squam and Crescent also attended, but they were the ones that didn't see their, their places.
And then this uses up all the money, so why, they have to return.
Yeah, well, and, and another thing to do is that we were looking to save the RFP in the new bill. I think that there's an issue of really working on the Florida Department. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, it seemed that they were just on the part of the doctor more, where they didn't want to review that in two thousand sixteen, let's just wait for the next one, I don't, I really can't, I don't know if it was obvious.
Some, you could say.
Uh, your first recommendation, uh, the former school district, the contract, the contract, we're coming back.
Okay.
Yeah.
By the, by the regulation of the tax force.
Thank you.
Minimum two with prevention alerts, extending contracts through December thirty-one, twenty sixteen, add it.
Oh, there she is.
You know, this one, you need sweater, I agree, Christmas time.
My Christmas sweaters. One of my favorites I have in here. Um, what we have is another amendment to the prevention works contract. As you remember, when they gave their update last week, they said that this would become a, so it extends it for another year, adds the rest of the money, so they would, excuse me, contract.
Pitch your breath.
Adding the rest of the money so that it would completely use up the prevention that applies by the end of next year. Which is also at the end of the year.
Are there futures coming?
Forty-eight, it's forty-nine, prevention works, short term.
Yes, yes. We've been working with the treasurer and president, we've got.